First item, do you have any communications for the visitors here? Alright, next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. They're presented to you.
The one thing that I did add to the agenda was the, in the old business, I put a piece where we could take a motion or action to provide a commitment to the PTO of the sixty-five thousand dollars for the playground at the elementary, just so there's a formal commitment. They could then use that for writing grants and things like that. So, that's the only thing that I've added.
Can we add things to the business at this point in time?
It'd be an amendment, so if the board decided to amend it, yeah.
Okay, I would like to add the prayer meeting.
For discussion under new business?
Yeah. No action, just discussion.
We'll approve the agenda with...
Yeah, so we motion to approve the agenda with the addition of...
Our second.
Motion by Jen, second by Christine, to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of the new business. Discussion regarding the prayer meeting. Alright, proceed, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. The guy that does online years, we gotta wait a couple seconds for him to say his ayes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Second by, uh, second by Rod to approve the consent agenda.
I have some questions on the bills. This is time for discussion. Okay. When it says, uh, the BMO Harris commercial card, I see that we spent over almost eight thousand dollars on general supplies, like what is that for?
So, general supplies would be our teacher orders throughout the summer. So, any of the orders that were going for classroom materials and things like that. It also would have included, so the way it's coded would have included like the Title I items and stuff like that as well.
And Embassy Suites was out for one of our teams?
So, Embassy Suites that would have been, um, that'd be... Uh, was, quality and suites was for the SAI, that would have been August. Embassy would that have been, um...
It was six thousand dollars, that's a pretty good amount.
Yeah, would that, the BMO, would that have been, um, basketball or which?
No, I would have been, uh, I would have been this.
Oh, senior trip, is that where they, the Embassy Suites there?
Okay. And what do they use the money on the National Honor Society Service Day? So, over a thousand dollars, what do they use that for?
I believe it'd be materials to support the activities that they are doing that day. So, um, I can get with Jen scrubbing through details on that.
It's a lot of money for a project we don't know what to do.
Isn't National Honor Society's money though?
I don't know, is it?
Yeah, it'd be outdated because I'm...
Out of their own...
Their own money.
Oh, okay, I didn't know, that's, that's what I was wondering.
So, under the bills, it should have a budget of, if it was, budget that's coming out of.
What's the National Honor Society, but I didn't know that meant that that was coming out?
No, I'm saying if it was under the, in the bills, is it under, under the, um... I wonder is it the...
Activities.
Activities, well, if that's the case, then I think that's there. Um, so, going back to your credit card receipts, we were gonna start itemizing those out a little bit, alright? I think that's where, just having the group does one thing, it just doesn't give the transparency that it's... Because especially now that we're working so much online, it's always gonna come off.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um... Rock by Strickly, what was that for?
Um, that was to detail one of the vans.
We don't clean them ourselves.
So, we had, um, issue where with the moisture and humidity of the summer, so the, the van got mold in it. So, we didn't have a professional detail, we were supposed to try and prove ourselves.
Right, that was a van that was used this summer or from last?
Would have been used, um, throughout the summer, so with softball.
Great. And then, how come we still have eight hundred dollars in Clyburn water and sewer?
Water and football field.
For a month?
Yeah, we brought, we brought it up before, so like, um...
The last one, they said it was from way previous, but we should have been caught up.
That's about average of what it is.
Is eight hundred dollars a month for the...
Especially when we're irrigating and watering the football season.
With this much rain, we spent eight hundred dollars to water that football field this month?
It's just a little tiny, so you can just turn it on and off.
Well, you can. That's a lot of money. And we probably should have even had to water this one.
That seems to be about the average cost every time.
Okay, and then, did we get another, um, new scrubber?
Yes, so shifted the scrubber that we had at the elementary, um, had, that was old and certain qualifier, would have been costing more to fix it than replace it. So, replaced that one, took the one that was here at the high school, the ride-on scrubber over the elementary, um, with it being all one level, made a little more sense to ship that over there and then the new one came over here.
Okay, great.
Yep.
I think that's all we need to say. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion items? Original motion by Rod, second by Rod to approve the consent agenda, proceed to vote, all those favor say aye. Alright, both same sign. Okay, um, next items are the reports. Ryan, I want you to go first.
Hey, uh, this is always an interesting time of the year, things are going and stuff, and kids are back in school. Started with volleyball, volleyball had a quad on Tuesday, uh, they went two and one. They beat Watsi Valley, who was ranked eleventh in class two A, then they beat North Amo, who was ranked number two in one A, which is what class we're in, so off to a really good start, they got thirty-three girls out. That's about what the number was last year. They'll be at Gruney Center next Tuesday, Tuesday for JV varsity, um, night. Football starts officially tomorrow night, we host Janesville, that'll be youth football night as well. Now, thirty-two kids out, and that's right around what we had last year. Had a scrimmage last Friday against Cedar Ridge Christian. Uh, JV will be at Turkey Valley September second for their first official game. Uh, Crest Country was in action tonight, they're probably done right now. Uh, they are at Marshalltown, they have seven participating. Um, they have five boys, two girls, they had one girl last year, so they gained a girl. Um, numbers, I think, are about what they were last year. They'll run next Thursday at Pine Lake Country Club, uh, hosted by South Garden. Uh, exciting for cheerleading, last year they had eleven, I believe, and this year they have sixteen girls, so there's a spike in five there. Um, they're actually gonna have a JV and varsity squad due to the numbers, so we'll have JV squad. We had varsity home games and as well as JV home games, so I don't, I don't think, we didn't have that, haven't had that in the past, um, with that amount of numbers, so great to see. Um, and then, fine arts, uh, musical is Wizard of Oz, I know they had auditions this week. I counted, I think there was twenty-five kids signed up for additions. And then, there's also, Mr. Tesenhor said there's usually five or six that are helping backstage, so about thirty total. Last year it was forty-three, so not quite as much, um, but still, thirty's pretty good. Um, so, additions, I think, were yesterday and this morning before school. So, um...
Someone's helping out there, who's helping out there, musical?
Uh, it should be Mr. Tesen...
Got you now.
Mr. Tesenhor, I think Miss Nissen, I'm sure.
I'm sure Miss Nissen's doing it as well.
Yeah, I think so.
I thought we were bringing somebody in there.
Miss George was supposed to be.
Miss George.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I'm not sure if there's any other staff members helping out with that, but...
I think non-staff, I think they were thinking that, uh, Shariakoff might help out if it was needed.
Okay.
And, and, uh... Tiffany, uh, Rastus.
Okay. Alright, cool.
So, I think November fourteenth, actually, November sixteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth, so that Saturday and Sunday in November will be the days of these.
Really wanna man me for the elementary?
Should be on Friday, yeah.
Cool. Awesome. Well, thanks for the update, appreciate it. Uh, Sean.
What's your thoughts? Yeah, uh, uh, you see the probably like, communication that's gone off, families, staff communication and family. Uh, open house was a very successful, you had a lot of family, big turnout, so if you're seeing all the children, parents back in the building. Staff did a great job with professional development for the school year. The... You can't see the professional development plans, uh, coming up for the twenty-second, may alter a little bit, but make things CPI, we're committed to secure our staff and also our curriculum. Uh, staff, with the new curriculum, just, just now get into that. Staff, now just getting into that new curriculum and, uh...
You just come on by the microphone.
Uh, staff getting the new curriculum, uh, they've been really, the thing I've been most excited about is the fidelity and, uh, the intent that they are u- using with us, and so I think that's been a big thing. Then, uh... Uh, finished up our back-to-school trainings, we're kinda good to talk about expectations on the recess, hallways, bathroom, um, all, all parts, lunchroom, uh, kids and, kids did a wonderful job with that, with rotations, and then finalized picture day yesterday, which is always a, a big day in itself. I wanna say one thing, well, we had some, uh, situation today that our staff and students did a really good job at and like they prepared and, um, but all things went very, with, once that happened, everything went very smoothly from one step to the next process to the next, so, uh, but everybody just was like they'd been middle, middle of school year, so... Next week. Well, extra drill, okay. Yep, so, uh, and then, uh, uh, next week, I'm excited, we start, we start our fast testing, to kind of get our information of where our kids are at, and then we start developing interventions and, uh, getting things, uh, rolling in, in, in those intervention blocks, so, um... I think input conferences are next week, and so we better get free, I turn out with that, and, uh, getting people signed up, so... I think that's about all I have, so...
One note about the input conferences.
Do I?
I said one note about the input conferences, and this is an action item, but have we thought about combining orientation with the input conferences and just do those? Because really, input conferences is more...
Like open house?
Yeah, like open house, input conferences and like one thing.
I think we've had that, but it's, some of it we...
And the reason I say that is input conferences seems like, teacher still really doesn't know the scene that much, you know? So, it's more or less for the parents to communicate to a parent, like, I know my kid does this, or, you know, it's kind of your input to them.
Yeah.
Um, and I think maybe we could combine those.
Like capital for school, starts and then just...
Something to think about, um, this kind of like, kind of sense.
That was been talked about in the self-committee previously, and, uh, pros and cons of that. And I think the teachers felt strongly that it gave them a one-on-one to just really focus on the parent.
Right.
And have the parent have an opportunity to tell you about the child. And I think that was the big, they really found value in that, and they didn't want to tie that up with having to put Kleenex away and all that other stuff, they wanted just to have that block of time with the parent, um, so the parents could share. But, yeah, I think that was the rationale.
I mean, the Kleenex thing, probably is, oh, three or four minutes, so... I mean, it, it, you could, we could even do the conferences with a kid there and then, and sometimes.
Uh-uh.
Sometimes you could, but there'd be times you wouldn't, that's the only one too.
Not the input conference, I don't think.
Alright, something to us, so... As a parent, I know it's kind of like... Doing both of them, seeing the value from the input conferences, kind of, um, it's like, I think so.
I, I think if your child doesn't have a lot of issues, then probably it's, it's not as important, but the kids that really have a lot of things, the parents really wanna share, locations or behaviors or whatever, you know? And maybe that could be, you know, set up that way, you'd have the option, maybe it would be, you know?
Good. Alright. No, it's good. Yeah, good report, anything else that you wanna work? First, you say?
Why?
Good, going good though?
Yeah, I mean, school day has been great, uh, yeah, school day's been great, uh, you know, real thing, but... In general, it's been really good, positive turnout, kids, uh, like we've, like this year, we, we've probably, we've probably had more changes within our schedule and with, during the school day, with, uh, the football, like the structures of like, uh... Subject areas being taught and also like changes in recess schedules and, um, but ev- everything's been going really well, I know. But there's, there's gonna be little hiccups along the way, I think my biggest message with staff is, this year is, be flexible, know that there are gonna be mistakes, there's, there's gonna be situations that come up, and when those situations come up, we'll address it and fix it and move on, so I think, um, just, yeah, a lot of changes, I would say. I think for the good, so...
Hey, um, are we, I don't know where we're at in the reports, but I apologize, I was not able to talk during the possession of the bill, so I just wanna ask a question regarding a purchased chainsaw and blower from Blackhawk Rental. Did we purchase it or rent it? And the reason for the question is, we have people in our district that sell them. And they should be given first opportunity to sell us that. If that didn't happen, that to me, that's a problem, so...
Yeah, would have been a purchase, and I'll follow up with Shane on if we got quotes from other places.
And in honesty, even if it was a little higher, they pay taxes in our district, we should do business with them. And I've had this, I've mentioned this before, I don't really wanna mention it again. So, if we sell something in our district, we should do everything we can to do business with the people that pay taxes in our district. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, going back to reports, uh, any other questions or comments about the reports?
Um, I'm good.
Go ahead, Doug.
I was gonna say, on buildings and grounds, I just wanna give that staff kudos. The softball field at the, in Clyburn was wonderful with that stump being removed. And so, just to get them thanks for getting that done, and it's, it's a major improvement, so, um, kudos to them.
Good, yeah, I was, how you work?
I just had a question on the technology.
Yep.
Uh, report. Did the phones end up getting...
So, we have, um, Marco coming out tomorrow, we have a technician on schedule to come out, and we'll be able to open there if we're able to get, if it's a phone system issue or if it's a line issue, so...
So... So, technically, since they're a provider, like anytime your phones are down, they have to report to SSC. Same thing with R2, your phones go down, you have to report to SSC. And so, like, I kind of find that their response rate on that's a little concerning, considering that that... I know nowadays, there's a hundred cell phones in the building and a ton of people call the fire department, but it just doesn't seem like there's quick of resolution to do that, so I would say let's, um, you know, kind of going back to our conversation about the voice-over IP, at least get one line going, so then that way, you know, if we're gonna have reliability issues with the current phone, then we're safe, I would believe. Just so we don't see this time.
So, I, I think that, you know, also, I just, to comment on that, um, if it's the actual phone lines, Marco isn't responsible for that, they're responsible for the system, so Windstream would be responsible for the, for the, uh, lines coming into the building and getting into that system, um...
Well, whoever the provider is, is the one that has to provide the, so it doesn't matter whose lines it is, they run the lines from Windstream, whoever is the provider, so...
I, I don't, I don't think that's the way that contract was written, but that's neither here nor there at this point, we just need to get it working or replace it.
Yep, so I should have answers tomorrow, and we'll follow that up with the, the board then, we'll, we might have.
Um, okay, anything else? This isn't a report that's on the, uh, boards, but the nutrition, I'd like to give kudos to them for all the summer program work that you guys did. Um, a lot of good work, hard work, um, and hopefully the community appreciates it, uh, because it was pretty awesome to send out those new deals you guys did, so thank you.
I just wanna reiterate too, I don't know if you know it, but, um, my grandkids, being Muslim, have got different dietary needs, and Jennifer has gone out of her way, um, above and beyond what she needs to do, and even with the summer program, she worked on giving them whole meat, which was way above what you really had to do, so, um, I think we should just know that. Really appreciate it, and I know you had other kids free and different things like that, and she accommodated all of those kids, so... Pretty amazing job, thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to the, um, personnel resignations. Um, so we have the first one, um, head baseball coach. As presented there.
I'll move to approve the resignation of Taylor Wolf as head baseball coach.
Second. Motion by Rod, second by Rod to approve the resignation of Taylor Wolf as head baseball coach, move for the discussion. See now, proceed vote, all those favor say aye.
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 Vote same sign. Good. Uh, now we have personnel appointments. Um, so we've got... We have two junior high football coaches. Business services and operations coordinator, elementary associate, custodial position, and changing of the music extragene contracts.
A lot of new football coaches together, I'll move to approve the two halftime, uh, junior high football coaches, James Whitehead and Tyler Eifler.
Second. Motion by Matt, second by Jen to approve the two halftime junior high football coaches, James Whitehead and Tyler Eifler. Further discussion. See now, proceed vote, all those favor say aye.
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 Vote same sign. Okay, next one is the... Business services and operations coordinator. So, this is the position that's shared between us and the coordinator.
I'll move to approve Aaron Hershberger as the business services and operations coordinator.
Motion by Matt. Second. Second by Rod to approve Aaron Hershberger as the building services and operations coordinator of the GR's Edith Circle, the one with the coordinator. Any further discussion? See now, proceed vote, all those favor say aye.
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 Vote same sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay, next item is the, uh, elementary associate.
I'll move to approve my Clark as an elementary associate.
Sir.
Motion by Jen, second by Christine, to approve Ryan Clark as an elementary associate. Any further discussion? See now, proceed vote, all those favor say aye.
Alright, aye.
Vote same sign. Okay, um... Okay, next item is the, um, custodial position.
Sorry, I should have just done one together.
I'll approve to, I'll approve to approve Kathy Hawkins and the, um, janitorial position, custodial position.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Matt to approve Kathy Hawkins as the custodial position. Proceed, any further discussion? See now, proceed vote, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Yeah, I was about to say, yeah, okay, let's go, let's, uh, some motions down there. Okay, um, so then the next last portion of it is the, since we don't have the, um, high school music position full-time, we need to do some extragene, we need some contracts, so, um, within that is, um, extragene for Kayla Nissen, um, and Michelle C.
I'll move to approve the extra music duties for Kayla Nissen and Michelle C as presented.
Second.
Motion by Rod, second by Doug to approve the, uh, extra contract duties for Kayla Nissen and Michelle C as presented. Any further discussion?
Is that, Kayla, just, just to work clear, is that, uh, that, that's being paid for basically by the savings and not having a full-time?
Yeah, yep, yep, it's, it's exactly what we would have had in those Schedule B before, it's just giving them to the people that are filling it, so...
Kayla's doing some of the elementary, so that's why the...
Yeah, that's why, yeah, so...
She's doing like, Cecilia did five, six choir.
Okay. And Michelle will cover the four.
So, we were unable to get the student teacher, yep, couldn't, couldn't get that done, so...
Tried, tried.
Tried.
Uh, we proceed to vote, all those favor say aye.
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 Vote same sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay, next item is the old business, um, so in old business, we have approved of the solidaric contracts. They're two presented to you there.
Do we wanna do the playground to, or first, or do you wanna do that, sorry?
Taken silences, we're not sure, so let's just go ahead and, I'll move to approve a commitment of sixty-five thousand dollars for playground equipment at the elementary.
Second.
Motion by Doug, second by Jen to, uh... You gonna say temporarily approve or approve the sixty-five thousand dollars?
Improve sixty-five thousand.
So, improve the sixty-five thousand for the playground.
Yep. In my mind, we're committing sixty-five thousand dollars to replace the playground equipment, and what that looks like, we don't know, but committing sixty-five grand to do it, that comes from savings from not having to buy a bus this year.
I guess, yeah, not buying a bus is a good, good way to spend it, but are, where are we at much of why it's for the elementary project? We're okay, we still said we can handle that.
Yeah.
Okay, we proceed, all of you, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay, motion carries. Alright, uh, so now on to new, or no, sorry, going back to the, sorry, by Jen, they came up as a little, they don't think it's, uh, so going back to the site logic contracts as presented.
So first site logic contract would just be firstly the exact same contract that we had last year, so it would not be any payment prior to, unless the bond passes, um, it's virtually that exact same, um, agreement there, just with the new, um, amounts added in. The second one is for kind of the immediate assistance, so this is where they're working on giving us some additional materials and stuff for marketing, for showing the, um, design of the, uh, plan and stuff. So one of those items that, um, would be shared would be like the video, um, where they're starting to do like the video walkthrough of the different space and things like that, that will be able to be on the website and all that as well, so.
Can you add dollars?
Yep, yep.
And the amount we're paying upfront for that extra help was twenty thousand left track?
Yep.
Okay, I'll take a motion, uh, to approve the first one for just the high school contract.
So move.
Motion by Matt.
Sir.
Second by Christine to approve the site logic contract for the, uh, high school. See now, we'll proceed vote, all of you, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay, so the next one is the, uh, additional work to help with the current bonding, uh, in the background check. Any, I'll take motion to approve that.
I'll move to approve the, uh, site logic professional service agreement as presented.
Motion by Rod.
Second.
Second by Matt to approve the site logic professional service agreement as presented. Any further discussion? See now, proceed vote, all of you, say aye.
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 Both same sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay, um.
With, um, the FFA convention, I know Alex is with the FFA, so she was gonna come in as soon as they were done. So I moved her to the front of the agenda, cause I didn't wanna have to wait the whole night, um, but she'll be in here as soon as they're done, so. Just pausing that one, come back to that as soon as she's ready to present.
Good, so then we'll move on to the IBA.
Yep.
Put the pin in that one, cause I'm gonna forget the IBA. Uh, which does bring up the next thing that, um, I think we should make it first being after school starts that, yeah, all of the staff do the introductions.
Yeah, we, we used to do that, okay, it's always good to be able to waver that, jump on and.
So they get to come to the next.
Yep, okay.
Put that on.
Okay, um, so the next new business item, since we're printing that, uh, twenty twenty-five FFA convention, is the buildings and ground, uh, committee update, looks like it's a movie. So do you want to protect that and play that? I imagine it sounds like it was really something.
Guess it's all in the future.
Did you fall down?
You okay though?
Somebody say something?
Did you fall down?
No, I'm still at work in, uh, down in St. Louis. So I just had somebody try to come in the door, so I locked it.
There we go. So this is what they have thus far for kind of the three D rendering tour. So there is sound to it.
Doug, can you move your microphone?
I'm done.
Okay, well, can you move it, A A?
It could, could've been. So that would've been like one of the science rooms, doesn't go into the other science labs yet, but I'm assuming that that's when they'll, they'll be building this out and it takes us into a special room we got used to here.
Not everyone's the same.
Right, right.
This is where it turns to go to.
Go down the other hallway, so media center's right on the.
To the east.
Yep, yep.
Are you guys calling, I can't hear you now.
Yep, we're just watching the video, so we just talked about how this, this is where we're going down the east hallway here and seeing the media center, entrance to gym hallway or gym access.
So the media center, they're planning on maybe having it open like that?
So right now, it's the way they have it displayed, it would be able to add walls or have either walls or glass panels. I would go with walls, but, yep.
True, that's my concern too.
So.
And they did notice, they have full cabinetry above this, which they'll make it, just to say, and I know.
So this is the, the first, yep.
That was a costly.
Yep, and this is the first rendering, we'll have to make cuts from, from this too, we'll, we'll definitely need some savings, so. But Jeff sent that.
No science.
So Jeff sent that, so if there's any feedback or anything that you guys would wanna see or have it be shown differently or anything like that, let me know, I'll make sure that I get that to them.
Yeah, I mean, like one caveat to that, he looks really good and appreciate them putting it together, cause I mean, it is like everybody is from Missouri where you gotta show them something, right? So like, that is good, but then you also kind of saw the feedback immediately of like, oh, there's cabinets here, there's this, not this wall here, so like, that's the negative side of providing something like that, is that you get the immediate critique, even though it's.
It's just a preliminary, yep, it's gonna be a lot of stuff that is changed and, and that kind of stuff, but yeah, it is nice to actually be able to have something. You know, before we had a couple images, didn't really have anything at the inside, I think this is definitely nice to be able to have, um, where we can look at inside, outside, which.
Really, this is what we were asking for, all the other bonds as well too, so that's, that's, finds it nice to see.
Just have to remember to tell people it's a concept, it is not the final.
Well, I think the critiques will help guide us to what the final product.
Yep, absolutely.
And I think the biggest thing there is showing the safe entrance, I thought that was huge, you know, and showing that, you know, how that's gonna work, cause it was like, how is that gonna be, is it gonna be congested, and just really show how I save for a year. I think that was, for me, a, a highlight.
Yep, yeah, that was, that was nice to see.
Okay, well, uh, thanks for showing that, um, so, um, next item is the, um, and it really stokes me here that we're having a committee update here somewhere, I'm not saying how's your committee update. Uh, so Matt or Doug, we'll let you guys update us.
We had a meeting a week ago, Monday, uh, the eighteenth, one of our main discussions was the phone system.
Hi, Jim.
Prior to the issues, we were thinking that, uh, well, our phone system is end of life after.
This year.
This year, yeah, so, so we need to do something regardless, um, but we were thinking that it would probably be next spring that we could, uh, move that direction, but maybe with the issues that we're having, we'll, uh, do something sooner than later. Sam had looked at, uh, using Zoom, um, and had some good options there, but Doug had an alternative, which I think it was Switchfox, it's what it's called, and it was, uh, very similar, but about half the cost from the way it sounded, uh, I don't know if we've got more information on that yet, Doug, or not.
Um, I've gotta get Sam some stuff, but basically the difference here, uh, is Zoom is a completely hosted system, which means, uh, approximate cost over five years was roughly fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and I know there's a lot of people that use it, it's, it's just a cloud-based phone system, and then you would end up with Zoom, which works better than Google Meet, but, um, this is an FYI, but you're, you're paying for a lot of those things upfront too, and to me, uh, it's a phone system and fifty-five grand over five years, when we're looking at trying to do some other things is a lot of money. Um, so we, I think we asked Sam to put together some wants and some needs, and there's an option to do another on-premise system, it's a hybrid system, that would be roughly about half the cost, so I think over five years, and it would reside in our building, but you'd still be able to use a computer phone and dial from your house to, an app that goes on your cell phone. Um, and, you know, it, the difference there really is probably four times a year, you need to do some updates on it, but, um, honestly, for twenty-five grand over four years, we can spend a couple hours a year putting updates on. Real easy to use, but, uh, we were gonna get Sam some more information and put him in touch with a vendor to get educational pricing, to see if we're saving some more money. Uh, I think when we got done with that, Matt, if I recall, we said we need to have a proposal ready to bring to the board by February, but given the issues that we're having, it may be sooner, and just so everybody knows, this would allow us to get rid of Windstream, so that's six hundred and some dollars a month of savings, and you would end up just buying SIP trunks from either RTU or another provider that would act as your phone system through your phone lines coming into the bit, building via the internet. So we're already paying four hundred and some dollars a month for high-speed internet, adding four or five SIP trunks on there to, to allow for concurrent calls would probably cost on ballparking here, under two hundred bucks a month. So it, it gets rid of the Windstream bill and goes to a, uh, a, a different type of technology, which is voice over IP, and, uh, using SIP trunks as your carrier. I know I got into the weeds there, but you need to understand it, it does replace that Windstream bill. It does allow for people with smartphones, we wouldn't have to pay for phone access, because there's an app on the phone that uses the school number if you choose to use it, an app that goes on to computers that you can call out with your computer, but we would still look at replacing our desk phones. So I think with the, uh, you know, the issues that we're having, we probably need to revisit that, and I've already reached out to Sam to see, you know, how, how he wants to do on that. Um, I think one of the other things we were gonna talk about was some AI stuff, and he took that off, because it was already a, uh, uh, a blurb in the handbook about that. Uh, we talked about some cybersecurity stuff, um, and we didn't get too far into that. Uh, and then also asking to put together a plan for cameras and door access at the, uh, elementary, because we need, I don't know if it, you know, the camera locations and everything and where they go, the number we needed, and any new access points is in scope or out of scope.
Right.
Um, and then we act, we talked, I think, Matt, we talked a little bit, we kind of ran out of time in an hour, but we talked about the school website and some of the things that it still doesn't do, the app still doesn't do, and some of the nice to haves with the website of being able to subscribe to say the basketball season and have it fed to, you know, pushed out to your device, um, that we need to come up with a plan to, uh, get it, um, keep it updated and current. Um, and, uh, not realizing we're still in year three of a five-year contract, so I think that's on the table to look at next year. Uh, but options, to see if there's any options, because I believe when they presented this to us, they said that these things would work, they would have the ability to do these things, and I'm not sure they ever delivered on them, so. And I think we, next meeting is probably gonna be, uh, I think it's the February, uh, work session, an hour before the February work session, I believe, so.
November.
Yep, is anything, Matt?
November, November work.
November, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, no, that's about it, uh, we just reminded Sam to keep giving app-to-G feedback on what we want and, uh, yeah, keep pushing so we can make changes, assuming that they still want us as their customer.
Yeah, I mean, can, can we request that the rep comes in with you guys doing that?
Yep, yep, so.
I mean, if, if we're gonna use, if we're gonna use some of those parts, we need to take them off.
Pardon?
On the website, if we're not gonna update them, we need to take them off.
Well, the, then it could, the question goes also back to who's in charge with it, and that's kind of like what Kayla and I have been discussing with it is like, assigning, essentially delegating the duties, because like, again, there's, you know, a hundred and sixty staff members that all have full-time jobs, and then, oh, by the way, you have to update a website on top of it, okay? So then, um, you know, how, how does that get divvied up, and I think that's kind of what.
Yep, I have a meeting tomorrow with our, our central office, all of our basically directors and direct reports and stuff within central office to work to divvy those things up.
But I mean, like, if we're, if there's functionality that we're not getting delivered on, then like, that's where.
Yeah, that's another.
You know, the guy that, Solus, that should come and talk to us about it and then get feedback on it. Let you guys during that meeting, see if you can at least go through and just have it be what it is.
Right.
To do that, um, I think if we're really curious about keeping it updated, because if, if not currently, it needs to be like the Hall of Champions, where there's a schedule D item for, and you pay somebody to make sure that everything is current and up to date, and, uh, they need to hold others accountable to get them that information in a timely fashion to get it updated. Uh, one other thing we did talk about there was how are, how are we filtering and approving content? Because there was some, what some people would constitute as an inappropriate photograph put out there of one of our students, uh, and it was taken down right away once it was brought up, but in reality, it should've never been posted in the first place. So what are those steps to make sure that these things don't happen again? And, uh, uh, like Sam was describing, you know, it's supposed to go through an approval process, but some people can post directly and that may be where this happened. So, um, just how we could shore that up so we don't post anything and then have to retract, retract it, because it was maybe not inappropriate or incorrect or had spelling errors, so that was another topic that was discussed.
Um, so circling back to the phone thing, so like currently we're spending, so over the five-year period, um, you know, currently we spend thirty-six thousand on phones, and then what you kind of talked about before with avoid one with the, one with Zoom, so Doug's opinion of like in Zoom, where they're really lost, so that was fifty thousand dollars for that, right? So then, you know, that's where I think that group can also. So then, you know, that's where I think that group can also, you know, help with the sales case of like what we get more out of it, you know, is if we can use this as one of the teachers' things to, you know, for meetings during class, things like that, that helps doing that. I think that's part of the, the sell to improve or increase the thirty-six thousand to fifty-five that we're looking at, you know? Because I mean, that's a decent job.
Yeah, it's a job.
So again, one of the things we hope to have this committee help do is to work with Sam to help evaluate these options. And then he would come to the board with basically, uh, the proposal. And saying, we met, this is what we believe is the best solution. Give you the high-level view of, we looked at these options and here was this selection because of these reasons. And then the board can either yay or nay or ask us to come back with something else, so. I think, I think it was pretty productive and pretty good discussion.
Yeah, it sounds like you guys had a lot of good discussion on it. And it's good to hear about it, so. Any other comments or conversation regarding the technologies we have deep? So who do we have next month? This is good.
So next month, I'm gonna try to make sure that we can get with our, um, our communications team. Because by then I should have a plan to go forward with the website, um, stuff, if who's doing well with that. But then also kind of tackle what we're talking through with a branding guide and those types of things as well. So we'll try to get a meeting on schedule there. And then, um, I need to get some, uh, at least one policy meeting in prior to next month, too, because of the new policies and stuff that we wanna make sure we get updated, so.
Okay.
So we can get two months. Yep.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the preschool handbook approval. So this is the Joint GR Little Rebels Preschool Family Handbook. Any, um, additions there or summarization, summarizing it a little bit? What changed?
Not a lot, um, changes from year to year in this. No biggest thing, um, it has to be fully aligned to basically whatever the preschool standards require. So that's where Sean's done a phenomenal job of really specifying out so you can see exactly where each part meets each piece of the, um, preschool program. So when it comes to doing like preschool desk audit and things like that, having this all spelled out the way that he's got it presented definitely makes that process a lot easier.
I will move to approve the GR and Little Rebels Preschool Family Handbook for twenty-five, twenty-sixth.
Pushback Christine.
Oh, second.
Second by Rod to approve the GR Little Rebels Preschool Handbook as presented in further discussion. See now, we proceed to vote, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Will some sign? Okay, uh, all right, motion carries. Okay, next item is the Quarterly District Newsletter, so.
So that's what you have. Jen caught one of my spelling errors, so I appreciate that, or use grammatical errors, so. But, um, biggest thing is just seeking feedback. So this first one's very heavy on project stuff, so bond information, um, information on the SAVE project, kind of pictures and renderings there, a little bit of a blurb on the physical plan, equipment levy projects that we've, um, are getting planned out and, and working through. And then got, you know, a staff spotlight. This is something that I'll probably, you know, this part would definitely stay in there and try to keep it going as we move forward. That middle content is the stuff that'll probably change and go through variation. So maybe our next one, um, would be after the bond, so we'll probably give a little bit more of a facility update as well. But then at the same time, or after, or leading right up to the bond. And, but we'll also try to include some information about curriculum and stuff, that some of the new curriculum, uh, things that we've been doing at the elementary once that gets under our teachers' belt a little bit more. And I'm always trying to put in some other things, so, um, definitely do a plug in the back for, uh, bus driving. So this would have been basically the same information that went out on social media today, um, to kind of recruit additional bus drivers. Some big celebrations, um, honestly, our, our state assessments, um, it, it's a great problem to have, but it's a, at times frustrating. There's actually a grant this year when it came to being able to apply for funding for, um, literacy, uh, curriculum. We wouldn't qualify because our literacy scores are too high as a district. So good problem to have, but you can't get fun because your scores aren't low enough. But overall, like, we're, we're doing really, really well, um, across the board when it comes to literacy and math. Looking at those, uh, items there, so. Also looking on, I pretty much, it was shooting math, several ones there.
So these already went out to the public?
No, this has not gone out. I wanna get your feedback first and then we'll get sent to print, so.
I would say, um, just for the initial renderings for the high school ones, if I can just, because I.
Yep.
See people with vision impairment, that that would be hard to see, so.
Just try to do some stuff there to.
Otherwise, I think your content they have in it is necessary to what we need to get out there. And I think you got a good mix of information, needs, more needs, personnel needs, and stuff, so I think it's good. I think this looks good.
Yes, tell them, Matt, um, it is really exciting. This is one of those things where it kinda sneaks up on you. You never really know how things are gonna settle with the dust when it comes to enrollment. But currently, as we sit right now, after the first week, uh, we're up twenty-five students, TK through twelfth grade. Projections, what we're looking at for preschools will be up four, like, quote-unquote, butts in seats, so two FTEs. But, um, I mean, we were projecting being up three to five students, so, um, Sam actually had to order additional Chromebooks because we didn't have enough for, for all the students that we were getting, so. Good, good problem to have, yeah. So.
So this will go out basically like this.
So I gave, I got two options. I'm gonna ask for your preference as well, so. And do the half-fold, I think the AEA can actually do a tri-fold as well. So it's gonna be something that I'll, I'll see if there's a cost difference or not. But if there's a preference of tri-fold versus, okay, there's not, so. If there's a preference, I mean, the, the tri-fold doesn't look really any different, but.
So we're just tri-fold and.
It's one tri-fold, yep, we just get the little stickers to seal the end there and then slot the stamp on it and we'll work to get the labels and all that pre-printed, so we're good to go.
Yep, I would say, go ahead and.
Okay.
Clean it up.
I'll clean those up and we'll do that. Awesome.
Okay, next item is the twenty-twenty-six Junior High Softball Reinstallation Trial. So there you have the, um, plan that Mr. Olson put together for us. Do you wanna read through that quick and then? Pass the discussion and then see.
All games will be away.
I think that is what we need to do for the first year because it's a trial. Even though we think we will add eleven kids out, we don't know in April, that could change to six. I don't think it will, but we're right on that line. And to commit to other teams coming to our place and umpires and all this kind of stuff, it's just, I would hate to say, hey, we're gonna bail on you, that doesn't look very good. Where if you, yes, we're supposed to go to their place, but they realize that it is, they're being good neighbors and they realize that this is not their, you know, their regular schedule, they're adding us, or we're gonna go against teams that would possibly have thirty kids out. So maybe the top fifteen play the regular schedule and the next fifteen that they need to get reps for other seventh graders to play against ours. So if they don't fill that game, it's okay. That's the, the thought process behind it.
So you kinda got, so one part of your adventure is that to kind of find those point contacts or leaders to kind of help push it. So if you garner an interest in getting people to kind of help lead with the journey.
Yeah, so we've got interest in some of the things you brought up down in like, whatever, three, three or four months ago. It is gonna be difficult long-term to have practices at three o'clock or four o'clock, you know, or have coaches coach at three or four o'clock in the summer. Not because of the coaches, not because of the players, but that's not what anybody else in the state really does and definitely in our conference. However, um, when you're playing against other teams, like I said before in those depth chart, that maybe those aren't the eighth graders that are traveling to a high school softball game from West Marshall. They're not going to the high school game anyway, so they may be more apt to playing at three o'clock, which means that first trial year, we would try like crazy to get most of our practices at that three. I'm just making up a time, but in the afternoon. And that would help probably have a bigger pool of people that could help, bigger coaches that could help. I also feel like three days a week for practice is a, a good spot and one day a week for games is a good spot because we are going through recreational, which is, you know, two practices a week. All of a sudden, you're going five days a week in tournaments, that's gonna kill any program, too. So you wanna kind of build that halfway-in-between thing and get it built up and, and have people like, I really like softball, I want to keep doing this, I can't wait till next year. That kind of a feeling is what you wanna have. Or I wanna, I wish we had practice on Friday instead of why do we have practice on Friday? You know, it's just kinda how you'd like to build from the bottom up, that's the idea behind it.
Yeah, but, so I guess my question goes more of like, do you have like a person that's gonna help and push it?
I mean, I've got people that all say they want to help. I don't have a person that says I'm in charge of this.
You have a committee that wants to help.
So if I can, if we can say, you know what, let's, let's do this, let's move forward with this, let's give it a shot. Now I can go directly to a few people, you know, narrow it down and say, this is what we're doing, what works for you? What works for us? You know, that, I can get more of a, I'm not sure, you know, I give it more specific. This is what we're doing, type of thing, so.
Okay. Well, I think you put a good, together a good plan for it here, I mean, it's a lot of.
So if we end up with eleven, you think that's enough?
Yeah, I mean, you'd want more, right? But the, the key is, um, you can always bring up sixth graders. It's not something we want to do.
I was gonna ask that, too.
But you can. And, uh, next year, the sixth graders could, and they could handle it. They wouldn't be able to handle the pitching part of it, you know? But you're going against other teams that maybe aren't playing those absolute great eighth graders you're playing against in the second tier. And so some of those sixth graders can, are just fine emotionally and have their, they can be in the outfield. A lot of balls aren't even going to the outfield at that level sometimes, and there's a lot of walking. So, um, those, gonna be sixth graders, there's like fourteen of them at that time. So there's plenty to choose from that would have the ability to do that. I just, again, you don't wanna bring up two and not three and then eight and all this kind of stuff. So I think eleven would be good, but next April, if we're at six, then it's like, boy, I don't think I should bring up six, sixth graders. So that's where it's like, it's still in that trial phase.
So if we do end up with six next spring, are communications still open with Grandy Center to still?
Yes, so in the event that something would happen, you know, I, usually we wait until April, but in this scenario, we're gonna be talking about it in February, March. But they already are okay with us going with them, and they've been really good neighbors in that standpoint, um, to let us come over. So if we have eight people, they still would allow that, you know? But they are okay with us trying this and they want us to be successful, too. And that's another game on their schedule, it's more playing time for their girls. For the same time, being good neighbors is, they've done a good job of that. And their athletic director's been really inside of that, Matt Lindman, been awesome at that, so.
The sixth graders, they can do both if they wanted to?
They can, it just becomes the same issue. Like, okay, now they gotta play junior high and then they gotta go play rec. And now the rec program isn't as good because the girl doesn't wanna play six hours of softball. She just wants to play two hours of softball. So it'd be great not to ever have to trickle down.
Right, I was just like, if somebody was on vacation.
Who would wanna play six hours of softball, man?
Like if, if we only end up with nine. And somebody goes on vacation, then you can just bring up a sixth grader just for that night to fill in while that person's on vacation.
Definitely doable.
Okay.
You know, it's possible. And likely, you know.
I do just wanna say, there's a reason why they don't play at three in the afternoon and that's because it's the hottest part of the day.
Well, that's the hottest part of the day, but we just.
That's why you have morning games and you have evening games. You don't have to know all that. Just say, ask a catcher, right?
We, we got, the, the three main principles, just so everybody can understand, is like, we, we got the participants. You know, it's a trial this year because it's that, that building part. But after that, the participants are there. The participants will gradually decline if they don't have an end to the rainbow. You know what I mean? If they don't, there's nothing for them in the seventh grade, why am I doing this? There's so many other sports that they just kinda don't really let them do. You know, so we do have the participants. We are right in the middle in the pitching world. We're working really hard on it, but, you know, it still takes a long time to pitch in softball. Purely is the hardest mechanical, you know, skill in the sport I've ever been around. It's unbelievable how hard it is. And then the coach, you know, that's the thing that can make those numbers go from six to fifteen every year. So if I can get that tailored just right and somebody who can step in there, not for a year, but step in there for a while, I think that could be a driving force. And then we deal with later when later happens. So, so just like you got twenty-five kids extra this year that we thought we weren't gonna have, it's an awesome problem to have. Wouldn't that be great if we were here a year from now being like, whoa, we got twenty-two out? Let's figure something out here, you know? So that'd be kind of cool. I just want kids to have opportunities, they know the end game is an eighth grader. Then that gives a username, Malia Rocky, a chance to then go play for somebody else. That's her dream, they've always been a softball player. Maybe we don't have twelve girls that can do it in high school, but we got a couple that they still can. But there's that building block in junior high that we don't have right now, so it just drops. I wanna give that opportunity for them. We all do, but that's the rule.
So question here, John. One, I, I think this is a good plan. Two things, I, I think that, you know, in this, there should also be kind of a plan to actually, if we're gonna play games, we're gonna practice, it needs to be done on our softball field that we have. And that may be a year or two down the road. But on the revenue and expenses side, what I don't see here is actually what this may cost us, what our investment needs to be made. It says for ticket takers, but we're not actually selling tickets, or are we? You know, the cost of transportation, the cost of a coach, all that stuff. Can we get some number involved so we know what we're gonna be spending on this?
I mean, the, the easiest answer to tell you is I can't put transportation in there because I don't know where we're going right now. I couldn't even give you a guess on transportation, whether we're gonna go to Actley or we're gonna go wherever we're gonna go. So that'd be something the business office could maybe come up with. But as far as everything else, for trial year one, there would be zero, to my knowledge, costs added to anything outside of the athletic department funds.
Well, I, I, I get it's athletic department funds, but we still, I think we still need to know what we're gonna spend out of your fund or whoever's fund it's coming out of. We need to go buy bats, balls, uniforms. And if it's six thousand bucks, I just think from, not saying it's gonna stop us, but I think we need to know what we're gonna be looking at spending. We don't have surprises down the road.
Why can't we just use the budget that we have when we have a softball program?
What was that, Don, when I couldn't hear you start?
I said, why can't we just use the budget that we have when we have a softball program in the fourth. And then just apply the high school to the elementary because we know there's gonna be a front cost to it.
Sure, I just don't know what that number was.
I can work to get that whole go back.
And, and I know you're not gonna have it to the, to the nickel, okay? But if, if this is a, if this is a ten thousand dollar a year deal, I just think we need to know.
Yeah, well, I can, next, next to guarantee you that it would be less than five thousand dollars. Guaranteed. Like, I don't think it'd be more than two thousand dollars, but, um, in the, in the past, when we run a high school program that's already established, you know, depending on how much money you bring in for gate and all that kind of stuff, you're maybe only, for lack of a better word, losing fifteen hundred dollars a year on the score.
Right, but you're not counting transportation in there, but I.
And I'm never going to give it to them.
It's a great idea, but we, even if you figured if you gotta travel ninety minutes to play games, that you're gonna play seven games, you can come up with a ballpark estimate of what that's gonna cost. I saw, I think I'm asking here, is just let's have some type of number so, you know, we're not surprised when we spent X and we thought we were spending R. But other than that, this looks good. Thank you.
Yep.
Do we need a motion to approve this? I will move to approve the junior high softball reinstallation, uh, program.
Motion by Jen to approve the junior high softball, uh, reinstallation of the recommendation. Second.
I'll second it.
Second by Matt. Any further discussion? See now, we proceed to vote, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, next item is, uh, the Waterloo Career Center twenty-eighty agreement.
So this is just an updated agreement of course offerings. They had a couple of courses that they were not having enough students sign up for, so they dropped those from the list. So just to update the list to approve and sign off on again, so. These would be offered to any of our students that qualify to take them based on being outlined in the.
I saw that was signed, uh, June ninth. Have we had it that long or they just?
No, no. So this is when they updated it, so, yeah, no, we haven't. That's when they approved it and then they sent it to me. It would've been, um.
We, we approved.
We approved the original one already and then they had to go back and amend it, so.
I mean, I don't, I mean, do we necessarily have to approve it again? Since it was just, they're just reducing some of the stuff on it?
Yeah, not necessarily. I just wanted to, I put it up there because I wanna make sure that I remind myself to get the signatures and just make sure that we had it approved and ready to rock and roll, so.
Uh, my question here is, you know, these are gonna cost us four hundred and fifty bucks a piece here. So I'm curious, you know, when we're looking at intro to business or intro to accounting and personal finance, do we have, or any of these, do we have any courses that we currently have that aren't offering that would overlap this? Um, I'm just looking at four hundred and fifty bucks a student to send somebody to intro accounting. And I think we have accounting one and accounting two. I don't know how that compares. But, um, you know, uh, that would be one thing. And then, uh, I didn't know in, in the shop area or, or something like that. Uh, you know, I think we have biology. I don't know if it covers human biology, but just.
Where are you seeing accounting?
We, we've already approved this. There's just less offerings.
I'm just asking a question. Do we have any courses in our offering that would overlap with these?
So like also what we did discuss in depth last time, and I'll remind you of this, is that it is still up to the guidance counselors and principals to approve those students going to do these courses for the four hundred and fifty dollars. So if there is overlap on it, they're still approving it. So if there is, uh, checks and balances here.
That's fine. And did we discuss they have to be in good standing or, you know, maintain a great point or, you know, not be on a, any criteria to do this? I know that mentioned at one point, but.
I, yeah, again, that was discussed and I would say that, that's still, I would say that.
On their per due?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Cause I mean, we had the same thing for any post-secondary thing of classes there, that those are approved and they have to be good academic stand, standing. I would say that the same applies to this as well too.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the updated twenty-eighty agreement with one of the schools, Waterloo Career Center.
Okay, motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Christine to approve the, um, twenty-eighty agreement between the Tier Two and School District and the Waterloo, uh, Career Center as presented. Any further discussion? See, now we proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Um, next item is the Wobsee Valley Sharing Agreement for the Teacher Library. So this is continuing on what we did last year.
Yep. Yep, just offsetting five percent of the cost of the manus contract there, so.
I'll move to approve the Wobsee Valley Sharing Agreement for the Teacher Library. Yeah.
Motion by Rod. Second by Christine to approve the Wobsee Valley Sharing Agreement for the Teacher Library as presented. Uh, any further discussion? See, now we proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Okay. Um, next item, Mr. Dunn's been patiently waiting for the archery district policy approval. So we have that district policy presented to us. There. It's a little bit interesting.
Yeah, I've, I've gone through this policy a few different times, um, and, and cross-referenced it to like the policy that we utilized when I was at Midland, along with looking at, um, other districts that currently have archery programs. And everything's pretty much mirrored into this. Um, I, I like how it takes a variety of things into consideration, including, you know, the academic standing, um, teamwork, all those types of things get addressed in here. So, um, I felt like this is in a really good spot for approval, so it'd be my recommendation to approve it.
I'll, I'll move to approve the archery district policy for twenty-five twenty-six.
Okay, motion by Jen.
I'll second.
Second by Rod to approve the archery district policy for twenty-five twenty-six. School year, any further discussion? See, now we proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Uh, one quick question for you. So at the open house, you had approved, so what's your interest level, um, for the program? It seemed like you had a considerable kids there to meet.
I have thirty-eight people.
Thirty-eight people? So that's more than you anticipated.
Yeah, I've been happy to twenty-four. And we may have missed a few at junior high and high school.
Awesome. So what's the kind of, uh, grouping of students? A lot of high schoolers, more elementary, more middle school?
A lot. I, I would say probably more elementary.
Okay, awesome. Starting now and then, it was longevity of the program, right?
How soon will that start?
Uh, we, we'd like to have practice start first week of November. Um, we're just, just kind of, uh, talking with John and Brian, see if they're gonna try to get it taught in school yet this fall. And then, uh, I try to help them as much as I can. And then, uh, I, we have the high school auditorium reserved for informational meeting. And then that's when I'll, uh, hand out the policies and then, uh, run down how we're gonna hold practices. And, uh, I wanna, I need a rough idea, uh, for, for fee costs, you know, for the insurance for the teams. If I can have, say, over twenty-four of them, they, uh, they'll screen print them instead of vinyl print. That reduces the cost. Um, as far as the tournament fees and then the, the state fees, uh, make sure we cover all those too. So, um, but these numbers, I got really helpful that. So that's what I really want to see. And, um, yeah, I, I'd like to see us start practicing and, uh, and, uh, first week in November, I'm in communication with, uh, South Tama. They'd like to see us at their tournament and they want us to do a duel between our two schools on December seventh. And I said, yeah, just plan us to be in there. Um, if something comes up, I'll just let them know. Um, but yeah, we, we're all pretty lined up to start competing, so.
Awesome. And then as far as like equipment and all that stuff, it's got a reason, all that stuff.
Yeah, it's sitting, uh, in the elementary building right now. And, uh, yeah, we've, we've got, we've held, uh, was it last April? We had our, uh, the state coordinator came in, offered a class. I got some volunteers, uh, that have certification done, got the, uh, teachers willing to teach it, uh, certified too with their program. So, so the ma, the, the state coordinator, he, he told me, he says, you know, everybody's a prize on after-school program, but really what we need to do is, uh, get it taught back in school. And that was the primary emphasis to this. And that's what I told him at the open house is, is, uh, you know, again, thanks to, uh, John and Brian for really helping with this. And with them doing this and getting the program taught in school, we are allowed to have that after-school program, so.
And then, uh, last question is, so who's helping you, kind of volunteer, coaching with you?
Oh, wife stepped up. Again, um, he's, he's a, Dick Keith was one of them that was, he'd be willing to help with the tournaments. Um, and Pat Dale Wamboldt, you know, he, he was, uh, willing to help out as needed. And I've got another guy I met at open house. He's out of Gladbrook. Um, he's a, he's a, some, uh, he's a competitive archer. And, uh, and I've got another guy I gotta reach out to. And, uh, so yeah, I'm getting help, so.
Uh, um, uh, Mr. Baker, help me as well to, um, who was originally in the meetings that we were talking about? Alex. Your figure?
Uh, no, he's a, he's just too busy. Uh, we, uh, Marshall Mega, he's gonna help when he can. Uh, he helped with the open house, cause, uh, when my wife was going around with the kids to the school, so he sat at the table at the high school, so she was able to get with him again, so.
Awesome. And then, feel good, awesome. Same, um. So, uh, we'll continue on here to the salad bar approval for the second.
So the quote that's listed has kind of three different options. The recommendation would be to go with the second option there, so it's the, the middle salad bar, not the one that's set at the elementary height, so it's set at the center here. Jen, would you wanna add anything about the salad bar?
We're still trying to find something that will, this one is a little too tall. We're hoping, um, it's similar, but they're looking for smaller castings.
So is, is our existing salad bar not functioning or not large enough?
Um, we are looking at spending something that kids can actually see, um, versus not.
I'm trying to, I can't hear you very well.
Looking at trying to spend, uh, funding on things that the kids can actually see and utilize. So it'd be, allow us to expand the salad bar, um, offerings and stuff that way.
So there's nothing really wrong with our salad bars, cause this.
At the elementary, they're, uh, we've been having problems with it for a few years.
Okay. Well, if there's problems, let's replace it. Thank you.
So we're also doing the freezer or just the salad bar, okay, right?
This is salad bar, but this is, this one is for the second thing.
And that's line item four?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the purchase of a, uh, serving counter full of food, line item four, for, uh, ten thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents. Salad bar.
Second.
Motion by Doug. Second by Christine to approve the salad bar item four as presented for, um, I don't know. Need further discussion? See, now we proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Um.
One question since Jennifer's here. We used to get a nutrition report each month. Can we get that again? Just shows how many meals are served.
Yeah, okay.
All that good stuff, but what, where the accounts at?
But I mean, like, as far as going back to past, like with, cause I think his, uh, hesitancy as a nutrition doctor used to be negative quite a few times, sensitivity around that. So how is it sitting currently?
It's still very, very positive, very high. Um, we actually, I mean, the kudos given for the summer lunch program actually brought in more money than what it cost to do. So it's another one of those where.
So we can't even?
Can, yeah. And that was even with purchasing or renting a truck weekly for the, so it was air-conditioned and all that too, so.
And we're still doing the free breakfast for everybody, right?
Yep. So, good, good deal. Still have money sitting in his jet that is plucking interest. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, I, I knew this wasn't on the topic tonight, but you mentioned there's plenty of money in there. I think we not only did, uh, the free breakfast, but I think sometime in the past, we've done, whenever it was, like, school lunch appreciation or something, it was free lunches? I mean, is there any consideration to doing something like that?
Yeah, like a lunch appreciation week or something like that, where we do them for.
Yeah, I think there's something like that coming up and, and I think we've done it in the past where, you know, lunches were free for students.
To my knowledge, we are not allowed to do that. It is a federal policy. Um, but I can work with it.
But we can give them free breakfast?
Yes, we are allowed to do free breakfast. I don't spend all the money, but we're not allowed to give it out too much.
Yeah, it's one of those where you have to, you have to fully commit to the program to, to be able to do it. And I don't know if it, you could like start and stop kind of thing, um, but you know.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Like for that, um, we'll move on to the AEA, um, twenty-five, twenty-six service agreement.
So the service agreement basically takes, you know, before where all services through the AEA would be paid for with flow-through money. This is basically what our choices would be of what we're selecting to utilize the AEA for this year. So, um, I will say, I mean, it's one of those things where when you have to sit down and you make choices and decisions, like our value right now is quite a bit lower than what our money that comes in on an annual basis is within these areas. Uh, but part of that was we're able to, it's like, I think when we first put this together, we had around twenty thousand dollars worth of money going into, um, like leadership and infrastructure. Cause that would've been working to purchase like Kara Shannon's time from the AEA to come in a day, you know, every day that we would have her come in would've been nine hundred dollars through them. But now that we've actually hired her, she's being split between Running Center and us, we dropped that twenty thousand dollar line item, which then brought us even lower. So right now, uh, we, of flow-through money, we typically bring in, um, right around eighty-eight to ninety-seven thousand dollars annually between media services and ed services. And so of that, we would be looking at doing twenty-three thousand to the AEA. Um, one of the things I will say, um, that is different compared with this, compared to things in the past, our contracted services, you, you used to not be able to pay for that out of your media, media services or your, um, ed services funding, cause that would've been like our ELL services and things like that. There always would've been an add-on. Now, because it's all part of the menu, it's right in there. So like when we're paying the AEA to serve our ELL kiddos and things like that, that's included within the contracted services. Our media amount, that's one of the higher amounts that you'll see there, um, is nine thousand two hundred and ten. So that includes all van delivery, um, access to the entire media library and all online resources still. So we're maintaining all of those things, um, whereas, you know, for us, the size we are, that's actually something that has been in our favor. So I was talking with another superintendent where to do van delivery up at his district in Garner Hayfield, Ventura, it would've been like seventeen thousand dollars a year. Ours is about seven, because of our proximity to Central Rivers and it's based on a per-people basis. So ours is a lot less. So it breaks out, it's a little bit nicer that way. Um, but yeah, this would be our proposal, the literacy piece that we're asking for. That's actually bringing in consultants to work with our staff with the new literacy curriculum at the elementary. Um, the social, emotional behavioral health, that's a whole, um, basically for anytime we'd ever needed a crisis response team or anything like that. Um, the diverse learners, uh, that is just some additional, um, support with our special ed team and our preschool teacher. And then same with the support days for our preschool teacher with early childhood. That's to help her with like big Ds, things like that, provide professional development there. Um, and then, yeah, media and contracted, and that's pretty much it.
So compared to last year, it's about twenty thousand and less?
Yeah, so last year, they, they still kept, um, sixty percent and we got forty percent to us. Or, or is, no, it was opposite. They kept forty, we got sixty. And so, yeah, this year it's ninety or a hundred percent to us for ed services and media services, so, yeah. That money will go into the general fund then, so.
Yes, um, does these costs, does this include, I know that we rent where it was provided previously, the, the, the faith babies that were used and, and that includes the rental of those?
That includes the rental of those and all other things for like FCS and things like that, so.
Okay, that's fine. Um, under instructions, information technology is zero.
Yep.
So I know in the past, they provide support services for the configuration of our networking equipment. Uh, I know that their prices were outlandishly high.
Yep.
But given that we're not using them, what is our plan to make sure that all of our switches and firewall and all those things are up to date? And I know that we don't have them to do our cybersecurity, but you do have patches that need to be put on these things to help keep us safe, but to also fix vulnerabilities. So who's gonna be responsible for doing that?
So I know like last year, um, cause we didn't sign up for their, uh, tech services and stuff last year. But even if we had issues, we'd still call and they would just charge us on that like per DM rate versus, um, going through them as a contracted service, so.
So we could still call them quarterly and have them apply any vulnerability patches and everything to those systems, thank you.
Yep.
So this here is just kind of what we initially estimate. This is what?
So, this here is just kind of what we initially estimate. This is what we think we're going to use.
So, it's at lea-, at least guaranteeing that this is the minimum that we're signing up for. And then, if we go above and beyond, they'll just send us a bill. Um, but this at least lets us know from a staffing perspective and all those things. So, we really try to have these finalized a little bit more in the spring. But even this year was another one of those weird years where we're transitioning throughout the summer of there were still people moving around. One of our big things was we wanted to continue to work with Kara from a, um, standpoint with, um, the school improvement stuff. As she had helped us do the last couple of years with MTSS and all that. And they couldn't guarantee her that she would be able to be designated to Grundy and us. So, that's where we were like, okay, we'll just hire her and use the savings there to be able to recoup the cost of what that was going to cost us to share with them, so.
Um, do you have, like, um, conversations with the AEA to know? Because I mean, like, I guess kind of what I've been at is they're, you know, everybody's jumping off the ship right now. So, it's kind of hard to know what their staff's for to cover things. And what I'm kind of getting at and my questioning is, like, is there some things that we can actually pull the AEA now? You know, for example, social-emotional behavioral health. So, can you contract these through them, but they have a staff to where you can jumpstart your TSS or something like that? And then, kind of use them more as, like, a contract services to help go from there? I guess what I'm getting at is, how, do you have a good idea of what their staffing capabilities are in order to know what services we do?
Yeah, so, I, it's something that's evolving, um, and it's changing all the time. I know that there's still a couple of people right now that have been working with the AEA that are currently potentially getting positions with the DE and stuff too. So, um, I'll probably have a much better picture of that come about September, November, of what they're looking at. Um, I was asked to be a part of the AEA's, um, advisory board this year. Um, so that'll give me a little bit more of a background insight to what the capacity is between not just Central Rivers, but also, Central Rivers is now sharing a lot of stuff with Keystone too. Um, so, I'll definitely have a, I'll be able to come back with some of that information for your government of what capacities are. And I like that idea. That's one thing that I hadn't, I know we can share different things with the AEA, but with them being required to operate more as a contracted service now, I'm curious as if we can do, like, have contracts set up as that? And then, that would allow us to potentially use Pepper for some different things too. Um, so, I'll, I'll dig into some of that.
I mean, the, the reason why I'm thinking of it that way is, like, you know, we have that flow-through money coming back in. So, now we have a surplus in that, that was allocated to some sort of services if we got it, you know, that will still allocate towards it. But, is, you know, are an uptake in positionings that we have, you know, part of that's paying for those uptake in positionings? But then, is there still something that we can get out of it?
Yep.
Really, my point being is that I want to maximize the amount of services to the students.
Yeah.
And staff that we can get from that. So, that's what I'm kind of thinking about in that.
Okay, all right.
All right, um, I'll take a motion to approve the contract as presented for Caleb.
So, I'll move.
Motion by Matt, second by Doug. We're going to come later a second.
He was.
Um, any further discussion? See, now we'll proceed to vote. All those people say aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign? Aye, most curious. Okay, um, next item is the contract, uh, for transfer of state special education. So, when the...
So, this, huh? Okay, yep, so we'll do this one and then we'll, like, we can jump back to the top with Alex here. So, this one really is just, it, it essentially, when the law was set, um, it established that the district would receive all of the funding, but we're still required to send, um, ninety percent on to the AEA. Whereas before, all that was spelled out in the law, that the money just came through the district and instantly flowed through the AEA. It kind of made a stop in your accounts and then we had to cut checks. This, we actually have to go through a process of approving that we're going to cut that check essentially. So, it's just to approve that the ninety percent of the flow-through that's allocated or legally required to go to the AEA, that we're going to do that, so.
Huh.
Dotting it, crossing it high essentially, but whatever.
I need to approve the contract for transferring the state funding for the special education from GR to Central Rivers AEA.
One second. Motion by Christine, second by Rod to approve the transfer of state, um, special education funding from GR to Central Rivers AEA. Any further discussion? See, now we'll proceed to vote. All those people say aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign? All right, most curious. Okay, we're going to circle back to the FFA National Convention.
Those, both those things are microphones, so you're going to go.
Oh, okay.
Firstly, you have to introduce yourself to us and then it's a little bit...
Okay, um, hi, I'm Alex Dubel. I am the new FA advisor, a teacher, so, hi. Um, I guess I'm coming to see if we can get approval to go to National Convention this year, which will be October twenty-seventh through October thirty-one. I believe you have the itinerary in our budget somewhere. Um, so, Monday is kind of a travel day out to Louisville. We're going to try to get tours up at a dairy farm. Still working on that. Haven't gotten that completely solidified yet. And then, the plan is for this chapter to play supper every night for the kids, just so that we know they get a good meal in. Because, first of all, it's easier to go to somewhere like Capararo or, like, Spaghetti Works, whatever, and sit down, have one check, and it's so much easier and they eat well. And then Tuesday, we're touring Churchill Downs, which is where they host the Kentucky Derby. And then, we're going to the Tanaka Garden, and we're going to work on our plant ID and do, like, a scavenger hunt. I'm a plant person, so I'm excited. And then, we're doing a candy tour of a confectionery, which I've heard from the AP FA advisor. It is fantastic. And then, we're going to travel up to Indianapolis that night as well. Then Wednesday is our day at convention, so we're registering. We're going to Lucas Oil Stadium for the opening session, as well as touring Hunter's Honey Farm, which I have toured last year at my old school, and it is probably the best where I went on when I was at National Convention. They get to, like, go and see, like, how the honey is harvested, how it gets removed from the honeycomb, how it's processed into candles. And then, they get to bottle their own little honey bear to take with them, which is always a hit. And then, on their, I'm on Thursday now, we're going to also be spending time at the convention, so we're going to go and watch some contests. We can get ideas that we can bring back here, as well as listen to, um, different SAE proficiency awards and finding new projects we can also bring back. We're also going to Ozark Fish Patchery to hear about how they raise fish to release into a wild to keep sustainable populations. I'm hoping to get rodeo tickets as our fun social event. We'll see on, like, September twenty-third where those open. And then, Friday, we are heading out to come back here. And so, our budget is around four thousand dollars for the whole trip. It comes out to about five hundred dollars a student if we take seven students, which is what I'm thinking. And then, each student can charge two hundred dollars to attend, which would include their registration fee, which is not ninety dollars a student, plus the twenty, twenty-five dollars per meal for each of those four meals for supper, so. Any questions?
I, I see you're looking at seven, eight kids. How, how many do you have lined up?
So, we just opened applications yesterday, and those are due on September twelfth. So, that's the week of conventions, the same week as football playoffs and, like, volleyball playoffs, I believe. I think that's what it's called. So, I don't know if I'm going to lose or gain kids with that.
Just, just because you're, you're new and, and I think our policy is if you go, it's one adult for eight kids. So, you have more than that, you need to make sure you have another chaperone. Otherwise, this looks like a great trip, so.
Yeah. Um... Yeah, how many, uh, just kind of circling back to FFA numbers, what's that looking like for this year, all of the type of free program last few years, so?
So, we just had our parent member barbecue tonight. That's why I was running a little late, so I'm sorry. Uh, we had thirty members attend that. That's also the football dinners. We lost a lot to that. And there's also was a cross-country meet that I lost two to. So, at the moment, I think we're sitting in the fifty to sixty range of dollars.
Yeah, trip looks fun. Looks good, good plan.
I guess, I don't remember how much we had kids being responsible for in the past.
Um, one of them said tonight, it was one eighty last year, but registration and costs have gone up since last year.
Hey, hey, can I ask, is there, um, and I didn't see it here, maybe it's somewhere, but did Friends of FFA contribute, uh, any money towards this?
So, Friends is having a meeting in September, I think. It's the fifteenth. And then, we're going to ask for them to cover the cost of our tours, and I'm hoping that they're able to do that. So, that will also be a cost that we don't have to cover.
Okay, so would that reduce the cost of the trip or the cost that the student would have to pay?
It would re-, it would reduce the cost of the trip, so.
Okay, awesome.
Good. I will move to approve the twenty-twenty-five FFA National Convention trip as presented.
One second. Motion by Matt, second by Jen to approve the national, sorry, Doug?
Yeah, one, one question here. Are you taking a bus or how are you getting there? Did I miss that?
Um, the plan is to take a van.
Yeah. Okay, and so, you'll drive the van?
Yes.
And I think in the past, the schools picked up the gas for that, so, thank you.
Anything else, Doug?
No, that's good.
Okay, all right. Uh, so we had a motion by Matt, second by Jen to approve the trip as presented. Uh, we'll proceed to vote. Are there any other discussion? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. All those people say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign? Okay, awesome. Sounds like a good trip.
Perfect, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all.
Okay, uh... Next item here.
So, the next item would be to receive the petitions and to adopt the resolution. So, we have two hundred and sixty, oh gosh, number here, six, two hundred and sixty-six, uh, complete signatures collected. Uh, there were four removed for missing information where they didn't complete the whole address or things like that. Auditors may or may not take that off, but we, I just went ahead and deducted them just to try to be as accurate as we can. Uh, so, we needed two hundred and twelve signatures, uh, for ballot measure to be added. So, those have all been, um, collected there. I had eight more added on after I included this, so I have an additional sheet that can be attached to that original, uh, Xerox scan there. Um, so with this, we have the bond election resolution. Um, resolution language would read, um, and, and you guys can adopt this as presented. We don't want to read it all, but essentially, um, this would be for the seventeen point three million dollar, uh, general obligation bond, in which we would look to, um, do building improvements in additions to the secondary building. So, the public measure will read, um, shall the Board of Directors of Gladbrock, Ryanbeck, the new school district in the counties of Tama, Marshall, Blackhawk, and Grundy, State of Iowa be authorized to contract indebtedness and issue general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed seventeen point three million dollars to provide funds to build, furnish, and equip classroom addition to the junior high high school building with related remodeling and improvements and site improvements. And that would go on the ballot for November fourth.
I'll move to approve the resolution as presented.
One second.
Uh, motion by Rod, second by Christine to approve the bond as presented. Um, I think on this one, we'll do a roll public. So, we're just going around the horn here, so, Rock it?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Flatt?
Aye.
Devois, aye?
Aye.
Jen, Doug?
Aye.
All right, okay, most curious. Okay, any further discussion about that, uh, before we proceed forward to the next item there? Talk about regarding next steps here.
So, yeah, next steps now, we'll continue to work with SiteLogic, um, essentially to develop their plan. We do have, um, our town halls booked and our open, or our, um, open houses scheduled as well. Uh, when we're looking at the open houses, we want to try to make sure that we got one open house in prior to early voting. So, the October fourteenth is the day before early voting starts, which is October fifteenth. Um, so we have that, uh, on the calendar as well. Um, and then, those, uh, town halls are really just to give anybody that, you know, maybe didn't get all the information that we had last year, invite them back out, show them kind of what we're currently looking at right now. Um, and so that will be kind of the initial piece, and then those open houses will really be walking through, presenting. We'll have Matt Kleski here those nights to go through the financial pieces, um, show people how to use the financial calculator, um, things like that. So, I'm actually hoping to have that calculator, uh, put together for the September meetings as well, just because the earlier the better. Um, uh, SiteLogic will be getting a postcard out here within the next, uh, week or so as well. And we have a press release that will be sent out too, um, that they've put together for us. Uh, so that will get sent out to, um, both the Grundy newspaper. We'll also send it down to, uh, Sun Courier as well, just so we keep everybody updated there. Um, and then, uh, I'm trying to think, we will have another more in-depth. That first mailer will be kind of that postcard of just, here's what's happening, here's the website, link to the website, QR code, things like that to get to it. And then, um, from then, uh, we'll have a more in-depth, uh, mailer that goes out right around or before that early voting time period as well, uh, where it'll go through, like, what the ballot language will say, um, what a yes vote means, what a no vote means, uh, kind of walk through that. That was some good feedback that we got from the task force of really trying to spell some of that out. Um, and then also go a little bit more in-depth of what scope of the project would entail itself there too. Um, similar to that, that would be that multi-page mailer that they did last time, so, um, we'll do that too. Um, we'll also then team that up with, in conjunction with kind of our district newsletter as well, so that, you know, I'll be doing monthly updates within the district newsletter, but we'll do a mailer, you know, on that quarterly time, so we'll hit those intervals with that as well, so. I don't think there's anything else that I can hit on for that. It's kind of the plan for right now.
As far as utilization of the committee?
Mm-hmm.
How is that? I mean, it's kind of...
Yep.
The, I guess, keep drinking organically?
Yep, so, we'll continue to, you know, call some task force meetings and stuff to keep them updated of what's going on. Um, but Dan has kind of worked to hand that baton over, so that if they want to either continue as a task force doing the, um, get out to vote type of campaign, he'd support that, or, you know, him and the, the district, uh, myself will support that. But then, um, he's also provided, like, the, what, you know, can do, can't do as, like, a school employee information to them. Um, and then along those lines, he's also talked with, you know, if anyone was to, uh, want to start a vote yes committee, what that would entail. Knowing that, you know, him and I would still be resources to anybody for factual information. We just couldn't necessarily guide them through the process, um, you know, doing a vote yes campaign or a vote no campaign. But we're open to both. Um, Dan actually shared that, uh, he got invited to go to the, the vote no, uh, meeting that's coming up here in September. So, he's going to attend that, just to be able to be a person that can provide some information and stuff as well, so.
What day is the vote no?
I believe it's September, um, I'll look it up here. Uh, September ninth at seven o'clock at the Live Room Theater.
Awesome, well, that's really big, that's really good.
Is that something you would like one of us to attend?
Um, I mean, I'm not gonna advise one way or the other, just with it being the nature of a vote no, but I definitely don't think it would ever hurt to.
I think the, um, I think it's good to your own perspective, so, you know, for us to be aware of this. And like, um, you know, I know in the past, Suzie had attended some of the, the choose all.
Mm-hmm.
Um, usually the, it had come with conflicting things with something to go on this, but it was kinda the turnout. To go into, I don't think it's a.
It's not a no, we shouldn't go.
Right, right, no, no.
I think whatever preference we can do, two, it is good, um, so.
Yup.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, is a strategic staffing realignment.
So, this, this, uh, it's got a few different layers to it. So the first piece is just kind of an overview of some proposals that are kinda put together when thinking through our current staffing, um, situations within central office. And I even bridge it into a little bit of like our building and grounds as well. And so, you know, central office, we've done a lot of stuff to kind of remedy some of those things with hiring or sharing Kara's position, having Aaron come aboard and sharing his position. And we've been working through kind of our plan of onboarding him while also then working to disaggregate, um, segregate duties. Um, he gets some different duties that he can work on as well. So, um, with him having a marketing background, one of the things that I'm gonna ask him to assist with would be the website, things like that. Um, so I think that's something that he's, uh, definitely going and excited to do. Um, he's been a phenomenal addition and just a giant sponge of soaking up how to do stuff. Um, and he's been doing a great job. I know just the relief that I know Christine's felt with being able to have him enter some payables or enter things has been phenomenal. Um, so that's definitely been, um, helping thus far. And, you know, these next couple of weeks are gonna be some packed weeks. We have our audit coming up as well with, um, the CAR reporting, our annual reporting for the state. Um, so those are gonna be some big times that having that additional staff for it is really gonna be beneficial, um, there. Having Kara, uh, has been huge with, uh, HR pieces. Um, she has really stepped in and helped us, you know, working on filling positions. She's, uh, working with the shopper in the, you know, Brandy Register to get us an ad for, uh, bus drivers, things like that. Um, but then any of our onboarding and those types of pieces of paperwork, she's stepped up. And I think that's another thing that she's relates this to Christine with of not having all that fall on her plate right at the beginning here too. So, um, with those two additions, Kate has been our other cog within our, um, group, uh, in central office. And she's definitely been some of the glue that's held a lot of us together. Over, especially over the last, you know, five years when we've had a little bit of revolving door within our SBO position. And so as we were actually going through the hiring process, uh, with Aaron, uh, one of the things that, you know, she expressed was her ability, that she's already been doing some of the, um, accounts payable, accounts receivable for the, the activity, uh, fund and the nutrition fund. So showing interest in being able to take on more of a role of responsibility and doing those types of things. Well, also for me, looking at what her current roles and responsibilities were versus what her job description or like board approved job description is, was not really matching. I mean, with what she's done with the nutrition fund, uh, with the activities fund, um, taking out a lot of those things, it wasn't necessarily one of those areas where she was truly like superintendent secretary. And so what I worked to do is, um, and I believe I have it attached kind of below where I have my recommendation for moving Kate over to a salary position versus an hourly, hourly position. Um, that segregation of duties really breaks out what we're looking at within central office of our key positions or key, uh, roles. And then how each person will work to contribute to those. And then along with that, I know one of the other asks has been, and how does that help you? Like, is, and how does that help me with kinda my load? And by doing this and separating it, I now have like key people that I can go to, like I have Kate that has access to my calendar and is gonna help me, you know, schedule like our policy meetings and things like that, and make sure that we review those things on a daily basis. I have, um, Aaron, um, and Kara be more of my policy person. Um, are people that will help us make sure that our board, um, policies are up to date. When we get them approved one night in a board meeting, they're then updated and automatically corrected the next day on the website and things like that. So really work to kind of break all of those items out within that, uh, piece there. So my, uh, first kinda overall recommendation would be to move, um, Kate over to a, a salary. Uh, right now, she's projected without any overtime, uh, we leave, uh, we were gonna have her right around, that is like forty-six thousand. So this would be an increase of sixteen hundred, eighteen dollars. Um, essentially this would remove then, require us to pay any overtime or those types of things, would be a salary based position. Um, it gives her a little bit more peace of mind and flexibility, uh, within her schedule and stuff too, as we're looking into summer times and how we can break up roles responsibilities in summers as well. With building and grounds, you know, while I was working through stuff within central office, building and grounds has been another piece that we've had some kinda higher levels of turnover, but we've also been working to really get our, our team well defined and get them to a place where they're really able to be efficient. Uh, part of the efficiencies and stuff that's helped a lot this summer is Clint has taken on a little bit of a role of assisting Shane in more of the bigger projects or some more of the grounds work as opposed to just doing custodial work. Um, with Shane's schedule, the way that he has that, uh, set up right now with his, um, you know, health needs, um, and those types of things, my recommendation would be again to move Clint over from, uh, hourly position that depending on what would happen with Shane or when he may have to be out or stuff, we'd have to be paying overtime for. We moved him to a salary based position as assistant building and grounds director, but then continue to be that high school, uh, head custodian. Uh, it'd be an increase of right around, um, yeah, right around fifteen hundred dollars, just a little bit less than that to the fifty-four thousand dollars per year there. But again, it helps make sure that we're not gonna be dipping into any overtime. And should, uh, the event that Shane's able to get, uh, a kidney donation or something like that and is out for an extended period of time, the natural flow over right into Clint being able to lead in that role too, without a lot of changing and moving pieces there, so.
Well, the first thing is, you know, I think the plan that you put together there on the tables and, uh, signing the duties and delegation is really good plan. Appreciate it and that, you know, looks good. Um, you know, I, I can tell you put a ton of work into it over the summer to kind of focus in on that and then get the segregation of duties and all that stuff in there as a plan. So I guess with the first one, you know, um, let's separate these out into Kate's item there. Again, you know, I think you have it really well tabbedized and divided up. So, um, yeah, I think it makes sense to, to do that with, with Kate and more solidify. Cause I, I mean, honestly, Caleb and I had the discussion of, you know, we've drifted so much away from our initial job titles over the years to where, you know, it was, um, you know, the previous one, but that was a long time, around twenty years ago, and so that's evolved very little since then, so. It's good that we're relying on that position. Any thoughts, comments, emotions?
Well, is, is this, is this the complete job description?
I believe what I have within that, um, so there's the strategic staff, staffing realignment. So underneath, um, for her, I would have the central office executive. Um, that's, that would be the job description.
So do we have that written up like the other job descriptions?
Yes, yup, it's very, yup, same format as what the other job descriptions are written up as.
You check with HR to make sure these all qualify to be salary exempt?
Yeah, yup.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and not saying we don't need to do this, but I recall a few months ago, we had discussions of, um, we weren't gonna be doing any salary increases or things like this, uh, contract approvals until we got closer to negotiation budgeting time. But, um, I don't know if anybody else remembered having that conversation, so.
We did, you're right. Um, you know, we didn't have that, but I mean, like, we've also been asking for updates to our request. And I think this facilitates that as well too. Meaning, we have new puzzle pieces that came into the board that is increasing our base width, increasing our workload as well as starting to get strategic items put into place that, for example, the HR rule, as you can see in the delegation of duties that he has tabled out there. That is, in my opinion, pretty clearly defined that, that she has higher expectations to basically make standard operating procedures and that type of stuff more clear. So that way we set ourselves up for better success in the future. So, yeah, I mean, you're exactly right. You were gonna say that this was, that was the case. If he hadn't rearranged it as much as that, then I would say like, yeah, let's table it until next year. But this is a significant shift that we've been kind of asking for.
I don't have access to any of your job descriptions, I don't think.
I'll share this one right to you.
I don't know that I, I requested access.
Oh, okay, sorry guys. Open that up here. There, hang on, we'll make sure I have access now. Is that a little more accessible? Yeah, all those two, so I got those, I believe now. Sure, if this is one, pay up. So we wanna continue going down the list, the strategic plan before we make any motions. Oh, yeah. Wait until I get it to number two. Yup, so I can talk through some of the other moving components of that. So number one was, um, kinda Kate's role, two would have been talking through, uh, Clint's piece. Three would be, uh, essentially a wording contract adjustment when it comes to Shane's. It's really not changing much. It's allowing or specifying and spelling out that we go from two hundred and sixty day contract to two thousand eighty hour contract. This was something that Shane had requested from, uh, I, I think it's just more of that personal, like, feeling if I could put in my forty hours a week, if I break that up over like four and a half days versus working five, eight hour days, what can I could do for recovery and those types of things? So it just allow that flexibility there, still putting in the, the forty hours per week, but allows him the flexibility of how he would work those, whether he broke that out in the four tens or, um, would do, you know, uh, four nine hour days and then come in for a partial day on a Friday. Um, so I had my, uh, when I worked at Pella, um, during the summer, we're building the grounds. That's what we basically had, is we had a set of hours, um, versus days per week. And then, you know, essentially we'd always try to work, uh, four nines and then on the Friday, we'd only work a half day, um, those types of things. So, um, it's just, uh, working through to give him some flexibility with that. Uh, four was the operational sharing components with preschool. Um, essentially the biggest thing with these, we know kind of out of the gate that, um, Aaron's position, we know that was set up to be shared. Um, and so I'm working through the twenty-eighty agreement, um, language for that role that will, I'll get to their board for approval and then we can approve as well, so we're able to move forward with that. Um, and then the other piece that we're looking at, um, when it comes to operational sharing would be that we could share myself as, uh, kind of a superintendent preschool director. So basically that'd be overseeing the preschool program, early childhood program, um, with, uh, in conjunction with Little Rebels. Um, with this next year being a transition year as we're working to bring that, uh, program under our purview as a district, I felt like there's already going to be work and time spent doing that, meetings with their board and those types of things anyway. Um, we already have set up within our twenty-eighty agreement where we're withholding, um, five percent annually for the, um, um, management of the program anyway. So we wouldn't have to change a lot of language. Essentially could stay the same. It'd just be adding that kind of role or title, I'd attend, you know, their, um, daycare board meetings or their Little Rebels, um, board meetings. And through that, um, essentially by being shared, we'd be able to gain an additional nine FTEs and offer operational sharing dollars. Um, so it's one of those where, like, work's already to a degree gonna be getting done. We're gonna be working through that. Um, I'm already working with Shane to be supervising that, that program and stuff as well. Um, this probably would have definitely had a, quite a bit more impact if we would have gotten the grant. But I still think there's some merit to consider it. Um, and it wouldn't necessarily be an additional cost for, um, Little Rebels. It would definitely be a big increase, uh, for us though when it comes to operational sharing funding. Along those lines, then we could also look at extending, um, within, whether it's either Shane's or if we were to move Clint to that assistant building and grounds director, we could share building and grounds with Little Rebels as well. Um, with them having or sharing our grounds anyway, this would be like supervising snow removal, those types of things. Um, if they had an issue within the building or facility, they could contact us first right away to assist with that or to help bomb that out. Um, we could help troubleshoot or problem solve. They have like custodial needs or things like that too. So it's adding that resource to them that they don't currently have. Um, and just ensuring that their facilities, with it being some, uh, facility that we've financially invested in and it being on our property, I felt like that was another area where we could maximize some operational sharing, um, ability, so. Think that, yeah, number seven then was the wraparound care grant alignment, but that would not be a big thing now, that there's not. We don't have the grant right now.
One thing that struck.
Sharing it, go ahead.
One thing that struck me on the number two, are we considering doing our own lawn and stone removal?
That's one of the things that we consistently tried to look at, um, throughout the years, if we could have the capacity to do that, whether it's, you know, through some hired, additional hired help in the summer, or it's us being able to take that on. Um, right now, our truck's not in the best shape. Um, it's gonna be one of those things where we'd probably be looking to potentially buy a new truck at some point. So when we do that, we could have one with the capacity to put a blade on it. We could then potentially take care of a lot of our own snow removal and that type of stuff as well. Um, which then would reduce some of our costs, you know. You pay for it one time and then as opposed to paying for it every year out of Pepel, so reduce some of our Pepel expenditures there. Like right now, we pay around forty thousand dollars a year with, uh, lawn care and things like that, um, through that. So as well as where it's, we're looking into whether or not we could have the capacity to do some of that ourselves, too.
Do we have the mower?
No, those would be things we'd have to purchase, so. I think it sounds good.
This year would.
This, this year would have been done. It would have, I may, I may have been hopping on a mower this year.
They don't even have enough janitorial stuff.
Right, with our struggles with keeping people on staff, I, I think it would be hard to make that work. But, yeah.
I, I would also struggle because you're talking about buying snow blower shovels, not only a plow for the truck. You gotta have something to do all the sidewalks. Then you gotta get up and get here early to get it done so that we can have school. I, I agree with Matt. I struggled with doing it internally because you look at a, uh, you know, you're gonna invest twenty grand in a lawnmower. That's one lawnmower, and I know they have two, and then you're gonna pay somebody to mow all those yards. It's a full-time job if you're gonna have one mower, in my opinion, but, um.
I think we're kind of, I think we're going a little bit off.
I know we aren't.
Cause I mean, if we, if we talk about what really happens, especially during snow. Okay, we have a contract to blow these, two different contracts, one that does the main lawn and then one that does the sidewalks and something like that. But they'll only do it if they're. But they'll only do it if there's so much snow.
Right.
And we've had Sean and Shane go out and do that stuff anyway. So I mean, like, this is kind of like, it's.
Well, I'm more likely to deal with something like snow if we can, if we can do it. But anyway, I know that's off topic here. So, um, anyway, be quiet.
So, we need to approve the new job descriptions. I said, we need to approve the people for those job descriptions.
Yeah, yeah. So we would be looking to, based on my recommendation, you know, you could accept my recommendation as presented within the like staffing realignment document that provides the job description in addition to the recommendation.
Cool. Procedural question, new jobs, new job descriptions, do you need to post these?
So with these being continued positions that have evolved, it essentially, especially when I look at like Clint's, we're adding something to his position. We're not removing him from a current one. It wouldn't be something that we would be looking to post because it wouldn't be a full-time position in and of itself. Similar with Kate's, hers has just evolved, so it's not, it's updating that job description. Essentially giving it a more appropriate title than what it currently had. But it would not be looking to replace or have it be an entirely new position. It's just, it's become that position. And so it's really updating the, the job description itself.
So, like, kind of to Doug's point, is it something like, you know, if you left in a union or something like that, sixty percent of your job was reorganized, does it, do you follow that? You know, who wants to retitled or whatever? Is that kind of the case out there here? Where you've retitled it, re-branded it, but the majority of the position is still the same as what it was before?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Right, so I mean, I guess is there, I'm kind of asking Doug here tongue in cheek, is this like a policy that's out there that says what constitutes a job change?
I can't answer that question without looking it up and.
I'm gonna say if you were in a union, that would have to be re reconsidered.
For me, it's, it's a new job description, it's a new job, but I, I'm just.
But I'm saying in a, in a union before, if it had, if you had so much percent of your old job, you didn't have to get it yet.
Okay, we're not dealing with unions here.
I'm just saying, that's an example. Okay, I know we're not dealing with unions. I'm saying that we're.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we're, we're keeping these people in basically the same positions they're already in. They're doing different, a little bit different work, but pretty much the same work. So to even consider opening it up would be ridiculous, in my opinion. So I'm gonna move to approve the central office executive job description and assistant buildings and grounds director jobs description. And and moving the people within those positions as presented.
So specifically, which ones are you referring to? Are you looking line item one and two, and three?
And, okay, I'll throw that in there too. And to adjust Shane Hawkins' contract from two hundred and sixty days to two hundred and sixty days or two thousand eighty hours.
So basically items one, two, and three is what your motion is.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
None of those have a connection with Little Rebels, correct?
No.
No.
Well.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, so we can have more discussion.
Yeah, Clint's, Clint's could, but when it's not explicitly stated that it would, it's not a shared position with Little Rebels. It's not what's proposed or anything. It's just, there's the opportunity that it could be, but no, it is not, there's nothing that ties it directly to Little Rebels generally.
So, but hold on, your original motion was, hold on just a second, your original motion was to approve as presented?
One, items one, two, and three, correct?
That was fed to items one, two, and three.
Okay, sorry.
Originally.
I was asking for clarification.
Hold on a second Doug, what I'm saying is Matt's motion originally was to approve the document as presented. And then you changed his motion to something.
I, I didn't change, I just wanted clarification.
So.
So if the document is approved, that's fine.
And that's what I'm, so I'm clarifying, are we approving the document as presented? Cause that also does give Caleb the ability to go after those sharing dollars for Clint's position. For Clint's position and also for when the time comes up for the transition of with the nine FTEs.
Aren't we gonna have to do a twenty eighty agreement for those?
Yeah, so those will have to take twenty eighty.
But this has given him, I guess, authority to pursue that, to, what, draft up the twenty eighty in order to perceive what with it, right?
We have to have a twenty eighty agreement to approve those positions. Yeah, those positions, so that is why I did not include that in my motion.
Yeah, so if you give me the grace to move forward with putting those together, then I can bring those to the board in September.
But that's not part of the motion.
But that's not part of the motion because we don't have a twenty eighty agreement to approve, that's why.
So we can have discussion about that part, right?
Yes, right.
Correct.
So we're just, the motion was covering only the first three items in the document.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if you wanna go ahead and proceed.
And then you guys give me the directive to.
Bring us the information and we'll approve, we'll approve it or deny it at that time.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the motion by Matt, second by Rod, to approve the realignment operational sharings for items one, two, and three as presented. Any further discussion?
There is one question. On the job description for Clint's new thing, it does call out Little Rebel State Care Facility. Collaborate with the Director of Buildings and Grounds on the operations and maintenance of Little Rebel State Care Facility, including. That is in that job description.
In that part.
So do I need to make a motion to amend Matt's motion? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to amend, motion on the table to remove that bullet point from the job description at this point. Would we have to then change the job description again if we then approve a twenty eighty for it?
No.
Not part of it.
Cause that would just be the twenty eighty agreement, I would specify that. It'd be within the capacity.
Hold it out of the job description and put it in the twenty eighty.
Yeah.
So I'm making that motion.
I'll second that.
All right.
So a motion to amend by Christine.
Second by Jen to remove any mention of items two to have any sort of Little Rebels.
Fixing clean.
Okay, so we'll proceed to vote on the amendment first. Um, all the voters say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Okay, and now we'll proceed to vote on the original motion from Matt, second by Rod, to approve items one, two, and three. Any further discussion? Let's see, all the voters say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Aye.
All right, so one, I'm gonna say this one point of order thing that I'll say on this one is like, so if you guys don't have access to the things on it before the meeting, you need to address that stuff there. So in that way, we're not.
I looked through this and I don't know that all that was linked last night.
I didn't see that attachment to.
So the attachments were there, but I didn't have the access open to everybody, so that's my bad.
Well, I know, but that's also on the readers too, go in there, click the attachments to see if they're.
But if the attachment isn't there, it's hard to pull up. I didn't, I didn't even see it there.
Yeah.
So was the attachment there, Caleb?
It should have been.
I don't remember being excited.
I know, like two days ago it wasn't there, okay? And I thought we had a deal where that all that stuff should have been there two days in advance, and if we don't, that's fine, but I don't recall seeing it on Tuesday night when I checked these things, so that's. Could be on me, but if it's not there, I can't read it.
So I guess we'll just have to like, you know, we've got two conflicting stories there, so. But one thing that I'll say is, you know, we need to read this stuff ahead of time, so then that way we're doing this. But then the next one is anytime we have personnel adjustments, we need to have those segregated out into individual things and prove them one at a time. I know we're trying to strategically align to this thing here, but I guess going forward, Caleb, that's what we need to do on that one there is is just separate them out so that it's clear, crisp, and we're not blanket approving a bunch of stuff there and getting rid of this weird conversation that we're doing now. Okay. All right, now, we're going to proceed forward to the central office hire contract adjustments for Kate as presented. So can anybody, can everybody ask or access the segregation of duties table that I was referring to earlier?
Are we like approving this table or is this more just?
This is informational, to show how we're breaking up roles responsibilities.
Okay.
So what's, can I ask Caleb, when did you post that originally?
So this, the segregation piece, this is one piece that I believe I did drop in today, just to provide clarity to my recommendation.
Night.
Huh?
At the auction night.
I saw this quite a while.
Yeah, he sent this out to us.
I was saying, I mean, this is, I've sent this out before, but linking it to this, yeah, I.
Like you sent it in a separate email?
Yes.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's fine. I just asked, it's not a big deal. I can see it.
I will just say, I think you're picking Christine's heart sometimes when, cause I'm not necessarily getting all your emails.
Okay.
So we're talking about, so now it's, we're just talking about changing of adjustment for Kate. Just the salary.
Yep, just the salaries.
Move for two salary in the.
That's correct.
I'm gonna check the salary for Kate, chilled off as presented.
Second by Matt, second by Christine, approve the move to Kate to salary and the salary adjustment as presented.
So then is that pretty much aligned, everybody in that office to be in a salary position?
Yep, correct.
I understand, I understand the want and need for that.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, so you know, we'll proceed to vote, all the voters say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Close same sign. Good. Uh, next item is the buildings and ground recommendation for custodial maintenance.
I will move to approve the, um, moving Clint to a salary position in the end of the year as presented.
So I got, second by Christine, second by Rod, to, um, move Clint to salary and increase his pay as presented. Further discussion?
I think he's been a great addition.
And I think it's good to have things bounced off Shane and kind of have, and see that the collaboration is good. So we'll proceed to vote, all the voters say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Okay, um, last item that we have, uh, purely addition is discussion of prayer meeting.
Okay, I just, I heard from numerous people, I just had a concern that on our school website we were advertising a prayer meeting that was being led by parents on our, so. I don't, it wasn't school, it wasn't a school sponsored one. And I have a problem with the flowover with religion and school. And also, like, did they rent the place?
Nope.
They did rent the place, okay. So I just don't think that we need to ask for trouble by posting that on our official website.
I will say, I mean, I did double take on it too, like, whoa, what's this? And I brought this up and I mentioned it to my husband, he was like, well, it's just like you're posting something for the library, which I get it, except for when it happens on school grounds, it does make people reflect, so I agree.
Or an ice cream post for the church.
Right.
You what?
Or an ice cream post for church.
Was that posted on our?
Yeah, I mean, we've included stuff like that in our community announcements and things like that before. You know, and when it comes to, yeah, so I mean, we've done very similar things where we've, you know, been a place where we've helped disseminate. You know, sign up forms and things like that before, those type of stuff. And I get it, it is one of those tough things, cause it's, you know, where do you draw the line? Cause if you allow one group, you don't have to allow any group, I mean, you do. And so I think that was, you know, was one of those things where when Brian asked, it was one of those, from my perspective, it would have been hard to deny on the surface of it, with us having had done things like that before. At the same time, it's also not something that needs to turn into a big deal either. So that's where I subsequently removed the post from the standpoint of, you know, information was gonna get out. And so that's where I made that decision to go forward with that, so.
I just think we don't need to ask for trouble. I think let's just be a little bit more cautious about posting religious events on our, on our school website.
Or, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with posting it, just put this, not really on the school. Cause I mean, like, again, going back to four, over the years, we facilitated RCA like kickoff meetings at school. I don't see that being problematic. Um, you know, as long as we just are clarifying that it's not associated with the school.
If it was a cult of Satan and they wanted to post, we're having a get together, cult of Satan, would you put that on the school website?
We'd have to allow it.
But do we wanna get in?
Right, right, no.
That's what I'm saying, do we even wanna play with that? Can we just keep it separate? There are other places that they could post that, or they could put it in the loop, they could put it wherever. I don't think it needs to be on our website. Maybe I'm a little old, but.
On the feed part of it, like, cause a lot of times we'll like send stuff out in the email.
Yeah, kids emails have.
And not necessarily been just like a feed post, so.
If you look at all the emails there, there's tons of church events that are communicated through that, just doesn't communicate in the answer.
Um, I would just say, you know, I, I agree with some of what's said here tonight. I mean, we do have a, there was fellowship for Christian athletes that was due in the facility. If they are renting this and it's after normal school hours, it is not a mandatory event. You know, the thirty-five dollars is revenue or whatever, you know, whatever we rent it for. But it's an optional thing, you can either attend or not. I would agree that maybe putting it on our website is maybe not, you know, a thing, but I don't have a problem including it in our community emails that we send out on behalf of the school where it says, you know, there's, there's, uh, the we have a weekly meeting at a church for kids club, okay? And I think, you know, we wanna be good community players and, and stuff, but I see both sides of it. But I, I'm okay, we don't post it on our website, that's fine, but I have no issues with them using the facility. We just have to remember that, you know, if there's somebody, to Jen's point, if, if the atheist came in and wanted to rent it, we, we need to probably allow it, so.
I would beg to differ, I think that the schools, we should be able to be able to decide. You know, I, I, you know, I guess if it came to that, I'd ask our attorneys if we could deny access to a group that we don't agree with their.
Who is Wade?
The school, the school board. You know, if, if, if we're not in agreement with a, a group's morals, or, or what they're, what they're doing.
We're not, we are not a Christian entity. Our school is not a Christian entity.
But we should have some ability to decide who uses our facilities and who don't.
Well, I mean, to the point where like, if they weren't meeting our conduct, we could definitely say that they wouldn't be able to, like, we wouldn't. I mean, obviously it's illegal, but you wouldn't let somebody have alcohol in here or something to that point, like, there should be something along.
I mean, it's, it's still pretty slow, I mean, from a legal, a legal perspective.
I would ask our attorneys for, for their interpretation, but.
Most attorneys would probably tell you, if you've allowed any other groups to do it, you're gonna have to allow them. Um, I mean, and there's been, there's been schools that have had that occur, where, um, the, um, I'm trying to remember the, be the, the pagan faith held an after-school activity at, I, it was a school in southern Iowa. Um, and sent, they sent home flyers, and it was in response to, you know, vacation Bible school flyers, something like that, going home as part of the school. So, I mean, the school had to allow it, and it, as long as they rented the space and stuff, they let them use the space, but, that's, I mean, it, it's not affiliated with the school, it is simply providing the same means. It'd be no different than, you know, that's where some of the issues at the state capitol have come into play of, you're gonna allow one group to protest, or one group to set up a display, you have to let any group set up a display, and, there's, there's been issues with that over the last couple of years there too. So, I, I understand, I think that's where, you know, what I'm taking away from this is, using the discretionary piece of like where it is posted, it's one thing within like community email to include information there, versus putting it out on the Facebook page and socials and things like that. There's definitely, I can understand where there'd be more of an impulse, or, uh, a sense of there being, uh, endorsing or condoning that, versus just the informational piece. So, our community emails are very informational, they provide all that for all groups, and so I can definitely make that distinction, and kind of see and understand that, so. But we've gotta make that more of our operating procedures going forward.
Yep.
Yeah, the only concern I had about it was the fact that said, "We invite you." It made it seem as if it was G R or was invited, and, and that was meant to be coming from whoever organized it, not from.
Both of our schools, yeah. Versus us like sharing their post as, yeah, so, no, I can definitely understand that. We, we can, I'll use that as kind of our guiding goal we should go forward there on that, so.
Okay, is there anything else you wanna add, any special?
Okay, I'm gonna try to go fast through this, cause my computer's telling me my battery's about to die, and I don't think my cord will reach. And I don't wanna unplug the camera and stuff, so, um, superintendent report, um, not a whole lot to add when it comes to the report. Um, there have been some things that have been coming up over the last week that I'm starting to dig into a little bit more. Um, you know, with, uh, the DOGE recommendations, uh, with IFRS and performance-based pay. Um, I did think it was interesting, we got a message from the Department of Ed this week, where the state is going to be pouring around eight million dollars into, um, a form of, like, a performance-based pay type of program. So I'm digging into that a little bit, and looking at like, if there's opportunities there that could help our staff out. If it'd be something that if we were able to get something like that, could we have a program that, while that part of the grant would cover a certain portion of our staff, we could also do something for the rest of our staff in conjunction? Cause this grant you could only, I think is, you can only like recognize or award twenty-five percent of your staff, um, with it. But, I think if we were, yeah, I think there's some ways you can play with it that, for me, when I dug into performance-based pay, it doesn't work. It's failed in almost every state that's implemented it, but I think there's some ways that you can incentivize like teamwork, working as a PLC, those types of, where you accomplish things as a grade level, or as a building, and then rewarding teachers for those types of things, I do think could be a positive. So if I can find a way to make something like that happen without, within the integrity of a grant, it might be something we could apply for, but, um, other than that, um, as I said, we're, uh, first week back, the staff was great, um, we had tons of recognition, um, and just, you know, I can't thank our community enough, um, between L S B, People's Savings Bank, um, you know, we did some donuts and, and stuff. Uh, brought a meal in on Friday, uh, for staff too, and I just feel like, overall, like, it just was a really positive week of getting start, things started back. Um, and so that was a really, really good thing. Um, our leadership meetings, we've kind of restructured some of our meetings, um, going forward right now, so I'm kind of excited to see how those play out. Um, these first couple of weeks have been a little bit hard to get those implemented, but, uh, we're going to find some solutions there. Um, we continue to work with our operations and, uh, workflow within central office, that's, uh, definitely getting better and improved. We've had a lot of really good in-depth discussions on processes and procedures, where we wanna get to, and like how we need a, you know, structure onboarding to allow us to get there. Um, kind of one thing I'm reminding Christine is that there's times we need to go slow to go fast, so she does not like me saying that too often, but. Um, and then, yeah, we're continuing to move forward on the facility stuff, so, uh, looking ahead, some exciting pieces coming up. We have our elementary bids coming out in October, so we're continuing to finalize the last pieces of the safe project at the elementary for that. Um, community engagement bond referendum stuff, we're continuing to work through there, um, then, yeah, our open houses in town halls.
Thanks for that. Um, okay. Let's see, the next one is.
So, September meeting, next week already, would be our work session on the second. Um, that's the first Tuesday of the month, so if we wanna keep that, we can, or we can move our work session, um, if so desired. The week of our board meeting for the regular, if we were to stick with the third Thursday is the eighteenth, that's also homecoming week. So, not that there's necessarily anything specifically going on, on that Thursday night. Um, but if, you know, that week is, is quite a bit of stuff, so, I, I think Christine and I have said, like, we would support, the board would like to move that to the twenty-fifth, just for, um, you know, that, to have homecoming kind of all encompassed in that one week. If we did do that, one thing I would look at, that is the same week the, um, conference in Chicago is that I've gone to in the past. It's a invite, um, where you're invited as superintendent to go, um, so there's only like four or five suits in Iowa that are invited to that. Um, so I would possibly attend that on the eighteenth, and then get back for homecoming game for nineteenth, but don't move it on, on the state board, so.
So you're final next Tuesday, you're final?
Um, next Tuesday, on the second, I won't be around, but. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't, yeah, that was the last thing we talked about.